The leaves are dancing down the lane It's melodies that ease the strain Notes soft as whispers in the breeze An autumn song to bring you peace The piano hums a gentle tune Underneath the golden moon Each chord a cozy warm embrace In this enchanting autumn space Steady by the fires glow With harmonies that ebb and flow As autumn paints the world anew Let mellow vibes accompany you The saxophone starts soft and slow A partner to the falling snow Its soulful sound A soothing balm in the crisp and quiet calm The rhythm of the rain outside Keeps time of tunes that softly by Reminding us of season's grace In every note, a warm embrace Steady by the fires glow With harmonies that ebb and flow As autumn paints the world anew Let mellow vibes accompany you The saxophone starts soft and slow A partner to the falling snow Its soulful sound A soothing balm in the crisp and quiet calm
In the twilight where the daylight fades Grass serenades the evening glades Trumpets sigh with a gentle tune Dancing with the rising moon Notes fill by like soft whispers heard Every riff a sweeping spoken word Trombones hum a soothing song Melodies in the shadows unfold Feel the calm as rhythms flow In a night where cool winds blow Let the brass ease your mind In this tranquil place you'll find Golden tones in the dusty air Breezes weave through a tranquil flare Jazz's spirit gently sways Guiding you through dreamy haze Books and brass a perfect blend To the night, your thoughts you'll send Every beat is a step to calm In this study session song Horns play softly stars above Whisper tales of peace and love At dusk, the balance is just right Trumpets call to the quiet night Golden tone as rhythms flow In the night where cool winds blow Let the brass ease your mind In this tranquil place you'll find Golden tones in a dusty air Breezes weave through a tranquil flare Jazz's spirit gently sways Guiding you through dreamy haze Books and brass a perfect blend To the night, your thoughts you'll send Every beat is a step to calm In this study session song Horns play softly stars above Whisper tales of peace and love At dusk, the balance is just right Trumpets call to the quiet night
In the corner of the room With notes strewn about A mellow hum flows gently Easing every doubt Brassy tones so warm They dance within the air Whispering sweet secrets Light as morning prayer The saxophone it sways In rhythm with the mind Each gentle beat a guide To the treasures we find Settling down the chaos In a sea of thought Golden beams from notes Relaxation they've brought Let the brassy dreams wash over tired eyes Melodies that float like clouds in open skies Soft and sweet they soothe with every gentle sway Helping hearts to glide where focus finds its way The keys they play so softly Fingers dream aloud In the study silence Where thoughts begin to crowd Bassline gently hums Like an old friend near Whispers of inspiration In each subtle cheer In this tranquil space where brass and calm entwine The world outside fades as stars begin to shine Harmony in hues of golden mellow sheen Crafting serene moments like a peaceful dream Let the brassy dreams wash over tired eyes Melodies that float like clouds in open skies Soft and sweet they soothe with every gentle sway Helping hearts to glide where focus finds its way
When the clock strikes nine and the daylight's dim The saxophone hums a gentle hymn Pumps that dance like leaves in the breeze Whispers of melody setting minds at ease Coffee brewing, book by the side Ink meets paper, thoughts collide Ethereal tones through the air Tranquil waves move out the care Let the sax flow through your mind Quiet moments you'll find In the silence, inspiration blooms A sonic breeze amid the room Each note a feather light and free Riding thoughts across the vast sea Softly landing where dreams reside A peaceful journey, no need to hide Candles flicker as shadows play Time slips softly into the gray Harmonies that gently undulate Lifting spirits, clearing slate Let the sax flow through your mind Quiet moments you'll find In the silence, inspiration blooms A sonic breeze amid the room
Are the firelight your eyes still gleam? Lost in thought or perhaps in dream? Books are open, minds align A tranquil moment simply divine Crackling embers, soft and low Pages turn, the knowledge flows Chill beats hum a gentle breeze Study times a perfect ease In this space where time stands still We're warmed by dreams and winter's chill A cozy nook where hearts unite All is calm by firelight Pens and papers, thoughts aloud Snowy curls from fire's cloud Music whispers, love vibrates Every note a gentle friend In the pages, worlds unfold Stories told and wisdom bold Fires glow as silent guide Keeps the night both warm and wide Burnings tango, step and sway As the night turns into day Echo beats in perfect rhyme Make the space of frozen time Pens and papers, thoughts aloud Strokey curls from fire's cloud Music whispers, love vibrates Every note a gentle friend In the pages, worlds unfold Stories told and wisdom bold Fires glow as silent guide Keeps the night both warm and wide Burnings cool by firelight Pens and papers, thoughts aloud Snowy curls from fire's cloud Music whispers, love vibrates Every note a gentle friend In the pages, worlds unfold Stories told and wisdom bold Fires glow as silent guide Keeps the night both warm and wide Burnings tango, step and sway As the night turns into day Echo beats in perfect rhyme Make the space of frozen time In the pages, worlds unfold Stories told and wisdom bold Fires glow as silent guide Keeps the night both warm and wide In the pages, worlds unfold
In the quiet of the evening When daylight fades away Notes of calm trumpets In the breeze they softly sway They dance in mellow rhythms Like whispers on the air Creating a serene moment Beyond the day's repair As moonlight starts to shimmer A gentle tune ignites A melody so soothing It sparkles through the nights The beats fall like raindrops On a window pane A tranquil mix of music To ease away the strain Let the trumpet's gentle breeze Take you far and wide Through valleys of relaxation On a tranquil ride With every soothing note Let the worries drift In this mellow mix of calm Hearts and minds uplift In the stillness of the night When study calls your name Chill beats and trumpet melodies Make focus feel less tame They paint a calm backdrop For thoughts to freely flow Creating a balanced landscape Where knowledge grows The warmth of every melody Wraps like a soft embrace Guiding tired minds to focus Finding their own pace In this sanctuary of sound Productivity aligns With each subtle trumpet call Clarity confides Let the trumpet's gentle breeze Take you far and wide Through valleys of relaxation On a tranquil ride With every soothing note Let the worries drift In this mellow mix of calm Hearts and minds uplift
Sunlight, looks real bright You're burning hot, not a soft fire Keyboard whispers, secret saxophone sighs Through the pages of knowledge our spirits rise Cafe lights flicker, the night feels grand Notes and harmonies drift perfectly bland The gentle hum of study, thoughts unfurled In this serene moment we find our world Leave your worries at the door In these rhythms let your mind soar Peaceful beats guide your quest In this quiet, we're at our best Soft breeze through the curtains, moon up high Sound traps of calm, melodies fly Silent conversations with a sax's cry In a lo-fi show, dreams won't die Piano keys dance with gentle grace Saxophone whispers a warm embrace Through each note, let anxiety fade In this tranquil place, we've got it made Leave your worries at the door In these rhythms let your mind soar Peaceful beats guide your quest In this quiet, we're at our best Leave your worries at the door In these rhythms let your mind soar Peaceful beats guide your quest In this quiet, we're at our best
Lazy Sunday skies are blue Saxophone whispers a mellow tune Books are open, thoughts wander free In this cozy nook, it's just you and me Coffee steam rises, curls in the air Notes of the sax chase away all care Pages turn and dreams take flight And the lo-fi glow will study tonight Let the beats flow and ease your mind Sax serenades, one of a kind Feel the rhythm, let worries slide In the soothing space we'll calmly ride Afternoon sun, casting its light Blending with music, soft and bright Pens in motion, thoughts aligned On this peaceful Sunday, everything's fine Every note, a gentle caress Melodies weaving, creating solace Heartbeats sink to the sax sway As we prepare for the week's foray Comfort found in each tender sound In this quiet, our hearts are bound Lo-fi whispers, saxophone sighs On this Sunday, beneath open skies
Under city's warm electric beam Night whispers softly in a dream Books laid open, thoughts take flight In the tender glowing night Notes play softly, jazz on air Serenades without a care Pages turning, minds unwind Find the peace they rarely find Notes play softly, jazz on air Serenades without a care Pages turning, minds unwind Find the peace they rarely find City lights they softly glow In this rhythm, thoughts will flow Gentle beats a serenade Perfect for your study play Street lamps casting shadows long Solitude feels like a song Pens and papers, ink can rhyme Dancing to this timeless chime Cushioned by the night's embrace Finding calm in study's pace Through the windows, stars alight Joining in this tranquil night City lights they softly glow In this rhythm, thoughts will flow Gentle beats a serenade Perfect for your study play
In the twilight, eat the moon's soft glow Cool cats in the rhythm, nice and slow Books spread out, minds in the zone Homework with a vibe all its own Keys and strings in a perfect blend Melodies that make a long night end Pencils tap into the steady beat Notes and tasks, harmony complete
Cool cats groove and the worries fade In the study haven, calmly made Pages turn and the mind unwinds In the soothing flow, peace we find
With each chord, time slips away Minutes drift like jazz at play Focus sharp yet spirits light In the lo-fi midst, thoughts take flight Keys and strings in a perfect blend Melodies that make a long night end Pencils tap into the steady beat Notes and tasks, harmony complete
Cool cats groove and the worries fade In the study haven, calmly made Pages turn and the mind unwinds In the soothing flow, peace we find
With each chord, time slips away Minutes drift like jazz at play Focus sharp yet spirits light In the lo-fi midst, thoughts take flight
The coffee steam curls lightly in the air A gentle buzz whispers through the chair Books laid open, thoughts begin to roam In this cafe nook, I've found a home Pages turn and sounds of life so soft Pen meets paper, study plans aloft Jazz notes trickle from the corner stage Chill vibes guiding words upon the page In this cozy cafe, dreams unfold With a jazz in warming every soul Study sessions blend with mellow nights In the quiet glow of cafe lights Eyes meet briefly, a moment sweet embrace
Sneaky smiles, hearts begin to chase. Lost in rhythm, lost in time and space. All the worries fade, without a trace. Hear the hours flow, both swift and slow. Every task completed in a gentle flow. Jazz beat keeps the tempo light and free. Creating a perfect symphony. Morning turns to night, but will prevail. Wrapping thoughts like letters in the mail. Soft jazz playing, stories we confer. In this café, dreams are sure to spur.
As the moonlit shadows play on my wall. I'm lost in the rhythm, feeling it all. Late night whispers in the cool breeze. My thoughts unwind and find their ease. Books are open, scattered on the floor. The ticking clock fades, time means no more. Pins dance slightly, right in sync with the beat. And this melody focuses sweet. Under the stars, calm and serene. Study sessions feel like a dream. Gentle notes soothe the mind. In the magic of the night, we find. A sax plays softly like a distant serenade. Guiding my thoughts in perfect cascade. Tiny lights glow, a soft ambient sound. In the lofi symphony, pieces found. Books are open, scattered on the floor. The ticking clock fades, time means no more. Pins dance slightly, right in sync with the beat. And this melody focuses sweet. Under the stars, calm and serene. Study sessions feel like a dream. Gentle notes soothe the mind. In the magic of the night, we find. Under the stars, calm and serene. Study sessions feel like a dream. Gentle notes soothe the mind. In the magic of the night, we find.
When the day's closing curtain draws near. The colors fade, but you're still here. The golden sax sighing song. In the twilight, we are alone. Golden notes, like sunsets glow. In this moment, time moves slow. Study beats soothe our minds. In the rhythm, peace we find. Pages turning, thoughts align. Every note is a sweet sign. With each breath from the brass string. Dreams come closer as we dream. Gazing through the window pane. Sunset hues wash away the strain. Smooth the creases of the day. Let the music lead our way. Day to study, calm and bright. Golden sax in the feeding light. Eases worries, clears the air. In its glow, we find our care. Golden notes, like sunsets glow. In this moment, time moves slow. Study beats soothe our minds. In the rhythm, peace we find. Under moonlight, books in tow. Thoughts and papers overflow. Stars above with silent cheer. Studying feels so, so near. Soft beats stir through the night. Melodies pure and just right. Eyes onwards but mind at ease. Knowledge brought by breeze. Jazz in the moon's cold glow. Relaxing as thoughts flow. Under stars, I find my beat. Jazz and studies calmly meet. Moonlight whispers in the still. Turning pages by sheer will. Every note a soothing sound. Jazz and learning all around. When exams are drawing near. Under moonlight, I won't fear. Jazz keeps all my worries small. Study strong with soft nightfall. Jazz in the moon's cold glow. Relaxing as thoughts flow. Under stars, I find my beat. Jazz and studies calmly meet.
Under moonlight, books in tow. Thoughts and papers overflow. Stars above with silent cheer. Studying feels so, so near. Soft beats drift through the night. Melodies pure and just right. Eyes onwards but mind at ease. Knowledge brought by breeze. Jazz in the moon's cold glow. Relaxing as thoughts flow. Under stars, I find my beat. Jazz and studies calmly meet. Moonlight whispers in the still. Turning pages by sheer will. Every note a soothing sound. Jazz and learning all around. When exams are drawing near. Under moonlight, I won't fear. Jazz keeps all my worries small. Study strong with soft nightfall. Jazz in the moon's cold glow. Relaxing as thoughts flow. Under stars, I find my beat. Jazz and studies calmly meet. Moonlight whispers in the still. Turning pages by sheer will. Every note a soothing sound. Jazz and learning all around. When exams are drawing near. Under moonlight, I won't fear. Jazz keeps all my worries small. Study strong with soft nightfall. Jazz in the moon's cold glow. Relaxing as thoughts flow. Under stars, I find my beat. Jazz and studies calmly meet.
In the park where shadows play. Sunny whispers, sky so gray. Lazy moments drifting by. Time just nods a soft goodbye. Saxophone in mellow tone. Through the breeze, it pops along. Notes like honey, sweet and slow. Comfort in a steady flow. Let the music ease your mind. Leave your worries far behind. In this groove of sound and light. Let the world just feel alright. Books are open, thoughts take flight. Dreams and hopes all feel so right. Study in this tranquil space. Lost in rhythm and in grace. Afternoon so calm and kind. Melodies and patterns find. As you learn and as you grow. Saxophones and shadows float. Let the music ease your mind. Leave your worries far behind. In this groove of sound and light. Let the world just feel alright. Afternoon so calm and kind. Melodies and patterns find. As you learn and as you grow. Saxophones and shadows float. Let the music ease your mind. Leave your worries far behind. In this groove of sound and light. Let the world just feel.
In the cool of a mellow groove. Where the saxophone whispers true. Let the notes wash over you. As the pages turn anew. Soft beats create a cozy nest. Every sound, a gentle crest. Focus finds you, feeling blessed. In the rhythm, there's a rest. Breeze of calm in every chord. Stress dissolved, your mind restored. Lofi tunes beyond resort. And the music pieces poured. In the cool of a mellow groove. Where the saxophone whispers true. Let the notes wash over you. As the pages turn anew. Soft beats create a cozy nest. Every sound, a gentle crest. Focus finds you, feeling blessed. In the rhythm, there's a rest. Breeze of calm in every chord. Stress dissolved, your mind restored. Lofi tunes beyond resort. And the music pieces poured.
The double bass hums a midnight tune. As shadows dance beneath the moon. Your pencil scribbles on the page. While jazz notes calm your steady haze. The low notes mellow, warm and deep. Like whispers sung from night to sleep. The rhythm sways, your mind at ease. The reveries on quiet keys. So let the double bass embrace. Each waiting thought, in its soft grace. Through lofi beats and gentle sway. It guides your focus night to day. The city sleeps, the world is still. But your mind races with a thrill. The bass lines pulse a steady guide. Helps drive those thoughts that won't subside. In the lofi chill that time. Your thoughts align in perfect rhyme. The bass your friend in every line. Holds your focus pure and fine. So let the music wrap around. In study sessions, lost and found. With double bass, your loyal friend. May concentration never end. The moon's our companion in this quiet night. Books open, pages turning, under soft lamp light. Notes and dreams blend together till morning's first hue. In the stillness of midnight, I'm thinking of you. Coffee's gently steaming next to written lines. Thoughts weave through the silence like mellow signs. Deep in study, the world fades away. In the rhythm of the night, I find my way. Midnight study with a soothing beat. Soft melodies where calm and chaos meet. Notes and lyrics dance around the room. In this quiet hour, we escape the gloom. Pen to paper, heartbeat to sound. In the depth of night, true peace is found. Whispers of music, gentle and kind. Lost in the moments of a tranquil mind. Jazz flows like honey over still night air. Warm and rich, it takes away each care. Rhythms of the saxophone gently persuade. In this lo-fi reverie, worries start to fade. Midnight study with a soothing beat. Soft melodies where calm and chaos meet. Notes and lyrics dance around the room. In this quiet hour, we escape the gloom. Under the moonlit skies so bright, books spread out in the night. A lo-fi beat keeps my mind light, studying feels just right. Notes and rhythms softly blend, pages turn and thoughts ascend. Jazzed up tunes my mind defend, focus till the very end. Let the melodies flow and sway, easing worries far away. With each note my heart will say, study smooth, come what may. Piano whispers secrets near, relaxing sounds none to fear. In this calm my mind is clear, lo-fi beats I hold dear. Gentle sax and soothing cues, waiting dreams in very hues. Every beat a calming muse, in this groove I can't lose. Midnight oil, the tranquil sounds, peace in music that sustains. Lost in study, wisdom found, while those lo-fi beats rebound. Let the melodies flow and sway, easing worries far away. With each note my heart will say, study smooth, come what may. Piano whispers secrets near, relaxing sounds none to fear. In this lo-fi beat keeps my mind light, studying feels just right. In a little corner, soft lights that glow. Where whispers of jazz and shadows flow. A place where midnight softly sighs. And memories linger in warm reprise. Piano keys like raindrops fall. Echoing secrets down the hall. The saxophone sings a wistful tune. While mellow beats sway with the moon. Close your eyes, let the evening breeze. Carry you through timeless ease. In the heart of night, dreams align. The perfect moment softly refined. A gentle hum, the basses embrace. Guiding thoughts at a tender pace. Tranquil rhythms, hearts they soothe. In this quiet jazz club, thoughts improve. Lost in melody, finding peace. Notes like whispers, worries cease. In the calm where shadows blend. A time is slow, no need to pretend. Close your eyes, let the evening breeze. Carry you through timeless ease. In the heart of night, dreams align. The perfect moment softly refined. Close your eyes, let the evening breeze. Carry you through timeless ease. In the heart of night, dreams align. The perfect moment softly refined. Close your eyes, let the evening breeze. Carry you through timeless ease. In the heart of night, dreams align. The perfect moment softly refined.
In the twilight of a dusky room, quiet notes begin to bloom. A piano whispers soft and sweet, and lo-fi beats they gently meet. Books arrayed in endless pile, a mind immersed yet all the while. A bridge of jazz floats in the air, easing thoughts with tender care. Oh, these nights of endless thought. With cozy rhythms gently caught. A melody to ease the mind. In notes so pure, peace we find. Languid hands on quiet keys, playing tunes to calm the seas. While rhythms sway in endless flow, the tranquil beats they gently meet. Breezes rustle through the night, bringing moments of pure light. Piano whispers in the breeze, with lo-fi beats the minds at ease. Each note a brush stroke on the air, crafting scenes beyond compare. With every chord, the stress unbinds, in harmonies our solace finds. Languid hands on quiet keys, playing tunes to calm the seas. While rhythms sway in endless flow, the tranquil beats they softly glow. Breezes rustle through the night, bringing moments of pure light. Piano whispers in the breeze, with lo-fi beats the minds at ease. Each note a brush stroke on the air, crafting scenes beyond compare. With every chord, the stress unbinds, in harmonies our solace finds.
In a quiet jazz corner where dreams freely flow. Soft beats whisper secrets only candles know. The saxophone speaks in tones smooth and light. It's a cozy escape wrapped in melodic vibe. Books open wide, under dim gentle glow. Pages turn slowly, the soft rhythms grow. The bass thumps a heartbeat steady and clear. It's study time magic and an atmosphere dear. Lo-fi beats and vibes, so serene and so sweet. Every note's a companion, making tasks feel complete. In this haven of jazz, thoughts drift in a line. Every moment a treasure in relaxing time. Soft saxophone sways through the still quiet night. Easing the worries, making everything right. In the nook of tranquility where melodies bloom. Studying feels timeless, emits jazz's sweet perfume. With a pen tracing notes to the rhythm's soft flow. Ideas come dancing as thoughts start to grow. Each measure a whisper, each turn a delight. Captured by jazz embrace on the flickering light. Books open wide, under dim gentle glow. Pages turn slowly, the soft rhythms grow. The bass thumps a heartbeat steady and clear. It's study time magic and an atmosphere dear. Lo-fi beats and vibes, so serene and so sweet. Every note's a companion, making tasks feel complete. In this haven of jazz, thoughts drift in a line. Every moment a treasure in relaxing time. Lo-fi beats and vibes, so serene and so sweet. Every note's a companion, making tasks feel complete. In this haven of jazz, thoughts drift in a line. Every moment a treasure in relaxing time. Soft saxophone sways through the still quiet night. Easing the worries, making everything right. In the nook of tranquility where melodies bloom. Studying feels timeless, emits jazz's sweet perfume. With a pen tracing notes to the rhythm's soft flow. Ideas come dancing as thoughts start to grow. Each measure a whisper, each turn a delight. Captured by jazz's embrace on the flickering light. In a corner cafe with a book in my hand. The world seems to sway to a mellow bend. Notes float by like a soft gentle breeze, easing my mind, bringing me ease. Streetlights twinkle as the evening falls. Mysteries unravel within these walls. Each page I turn, lost in a dream. Thoughts drift by like a lazy stream. Lo-fi beats set the scene softly they play. Turning mundane moments into a ballet. Studying feels more like a languid flow. In this quiet lounge where the stress won't show. Pen to paper, thoughts start to align. In the gentle rhythm they intertwine. Each beat a whisper, each note a guide. Helping me focus, keeping me tight. Outside the window, the city hums low. Inside the calm says it's okay to go slow. Each page I turn, lost in a dream melding. In this study lounge where time's suspended. Eyes get heavy but I push on through. Comforted by the lo-fi hues. A blend of work and rest perfectly melded. In this study lounge where time's suspended. in this study lounge, where time's suspended. In the gentle rhythm, they intertwine. Each beat a whisper, each note a guide, helping me focus, keeping me tight. Outside the window, the city hums low. Inside the calm says it's okay to go slow. Tasks seem lighter under the low. In the corner of the room, I find my space. Where the muted trumpet softly plays its grace. Gentle rhythms that drift and sway. In this quiet moment, I'll study away. Books spread out, I take a deep breath. In the glow of the lamp, no worries left. Each note a whisper in the room's soft light, keeping me focused through the night. All these quiet moments, serene and slow. With each beat, my thoughts begin to flow. Muting the chaos from my mind's away. Letting gentle music guide my way. Pages turn like the rhythm of a song. Filling my mind as the night moves along. Every trumpet note, a calm caress. In this harmony, I find success. Soft melodies that hush my fears. Balancing the silence in my ears. With each chill beat, a calm so deep. Guiding me gently, letting worries sleep. All these quiet moments, serene and slow. With each beat, my thoughts begin to flow. Muting the chaos from my mind's away. Letting gentle music guide my way. Pages turn like the rhythm of a song. Filling my mind as the night moves along. Every trumpet note, a calm caress. In this harmony, I find success.
On a quiet street where echoes play. The saxophone sings at the end of day. Notes drift like whispers through the air. Filling the night with a soulful flair. Under the dim and cozy moon, a jazzy serenade, a timeless tune. Footsteps tap to a mellow beat, lost in the rhythms of this quiet street. In the stillness where dreams align. Jazz notes weave through so refined. Every chord, a gentle sigh. Serenading stars in the sky. Lovers stroll through shadowed lanes. Hand in hand where magic reigns. Street lamps cast a golden glow while melodies softly flow. A singer hums, a tired refrain of love lost and hearts in pain. Yet in the night, hope takes flight in the sweet embrace of the music's light. In the stillness where dreams align. Jazz notes weave through so refined. Every chord, a gentle sigh. Serenading stars in the sky.
The rain is tapping on my window pane. Soft rhythms echo in a sweet refrain. With every drop, my worries gently weigh. Studying here, my thoughts become unchained. Smooth notes dance with the bitter patter, creating harmony that dreams can't shatter. A soothing blend of rain and music flatter. In this calm, my mind starts to gather. In the quiet of this rainy day, where melodies and raindrops play. Books and notes don't feel so gray. In this lofi jazz, I drift away. The scent of rain clings to the air. Mix of memories tangled in a snare. With gentle beats, they slowly reappear. Under the spell, I have no care. Each instrument, a voice so clear. Whispers of knowledge in my ear. Clearing doubts that once were near. In every note, I'll find new cheer. The stone outside is symphony grand. Nature and music holding my hand. Through these moments, I understand. In this haven, I firmly stand. In the quiet of this rainy day, where melodies and raindrops play. Books and notes don't feel so gray. In this lofi jazz, I drift away. In the quiet of this rainy day, where melodies and raindrops play. Books and notes don't feel so gray. In this lofi jazz, I drift away. The scent of rain clings to the air. Mix of memories tangled in a snare. With gentle beats, they slowly reappear. Under the spell, I have no care.
In a cozy nook where thoughts align, with stones, sax, tones, the world unwinds. Rhythm flows as pages turn slow. Melodies cradle, letting our gears grow. Old coffee steams by the window pane. Soft beats hum, easing any strain. Quiet tunes in the air so light, guide your mind through the night. Relaxation station, a gentle sway. Notes that whisper all worries away. In the moment, here we'll stay. Melodies that brighten our day. Piano keys, they softly dance, creating peace with every chance. A gentle breeze in notes so sweet. Peaceful vibes where dreams and study meet. Books open wide, minds delve deep to the sound of sax and silken sweep. Fingers tracing words anew. Burning blooms in this quiet hue. With every beat, focus sharpens clear. Notes so tender, always near. Strains of jazz in a lofi stream. A perfect ally for every dream. Relaxation station, a gentle sway. Notes that whisper all worries away. In the moment, here we'll stay. Melodies that brighten our day. Piano keys, they softly dance, creating peace with every chance. A gentle breeze in notes so sweet. Peaceful vibes where dreams and study meet. Books open wide, minds delve deep to the sound of sax and silken sweep. Fingers tracing words anew. Burning blooms in this quiet hue. With every beat, focus sharpens clear. Notes so tender, always near. Strains of jazz in a lofi stream. A perfect ally for every dream.
In a room where the moonlight gleams. We meet in the quiet of our dreams. Books open wide, hearts full of wonder. Gentle tunes pull us softly as under. Notes from a brass, tender and mild. Echo through nights, soothing and wild. Pages turn slow, minds ease into flow. Lost in the rhythms where thoughts gently go. Warm brass hugs the air. Lofi whispers without a care. Study sessions, turning sweet with every relaxed beat. Morning sun peeks through a sleepy haze. Yet the melody's still in its soft face. Chill winds outside can't compare to the cozy lofi ambiance we share. Crisp autumn nights, lofi brass still light. Guiding us through the longest of nights. Dreams merge with reality's thread in this subtle enchanting spread. Warm brass hugs the air. Lofi whispers without a care. Study sessions, turning sweet with every relaxed beat.
In a cozy corner with books piled high, the clock hands move but I won't sigh with each gentle sweep of the second hand. Knowledge flows like a smooth jazz band. The pages turn softly, a whispered breeze. Each sentence like notes in a melody. As the slow swing plays, life's full of cheer. Every word read makes the mind clear. Oh, let the rhythm guide our thoughts tonight. Lofi beats make studying feel just right. Under the lamps' warm and steady glow, wisdom blooms in the soft, slow flow. Oh, let the rhythm guide our thoughts tonight. Lofi beats make studying feel just right. Under the lamps' warm and steady glow, wisdom blooms in the soft, slow flow. Each problem solved is a step in time. Writing the answers in a gentle rhyme. In this tranquil space, all worries fade. Focusing sharp with each beat that's played. From dawn till dusk in a calm embrace. Lofi melodies fill up the space. Formulas and facts neatly align. All to the rhythm, perfectly fine. So let the world outside quietly spin. Inside the sanctuary, let calm begin. With every note, a new idea starts. Lofi and jazz, companions in the arts. Oh, let the rhythm guide our thoughts tonight. Lofi beats make studying feel just right. Under the lamps' warm and steady glow, wisdom blooms in the soft, slow flow.
Each problem solved is a step in time. Writing the answers in a gentle rhyme. In this tranquil space, all worries fade. Focusing sharp with each beat that's played. From dawn till dusk in a calm embrace. Lofi melodies fill up the space. Formulas and facts neatly align. All to the rhythm, perfectly fine. So let the world outside quietly spin. Inside the sanctuary, let calm begin. With every note, a new idea starts. With every note, a new idea starts Lo-fi and jazz, companions in the arts
When books are piled and the nights grow low The gentle hum of beats unfold in the quiet Where thoughts reside, music soothes In its calming tide, not worried In the world tonight, lost in rhythms Out of sight as notes dance With the moon's soft glow through pages Your thoughts will flow soulful tunes To ease the mind in every note Solace will find a tranquil vibe A peaceful quest with each beat You do your best Every chill, a whisper's grace in every beat A gentle trace through the night Let worries cease, find your rhythm Study in peace in the lo-fi melodies Soothing whole dreams and goals You shall unfold a symphony Of calm and ease your busy mind It'll appease soulful tunes To ease the mind in every note Solace will find a tranquil vibe A peaceful quest with each beat You do your best
Under the glow of the old street lamp Books open wide and minds set to end Saxophones whisper soft tales in the night Notes drifting gentle setting hearts alike The city's asleep but here we remain In cozy corners, dreams unchained Beats so tender, they cradle our thoughts Melodies woven in serene and soft knots Trade love sax, a soothing embrace Girding our minds to a tranquil place As pages turn and they cradle our thoughts Melodies woven in serene and soft knots Street lamp sax, a soothing embrace Girding our minds to a tranquil place As pages turn and ideas flow This serene study time, a gentle glow Gentle rhythms in the cool evening air Harmonies blossom without a care Lost in the stillness of this quiet time Each note a step in our uphill climb Thinking catwalk and stress fades away Each note a companion in this quiet space Street lamp a glow, our secret nook Where wisdom is gathered from every book Night moves along, stars in their stance Saxophone lullabies leave us in trance Whispers of jazz make the world seem small Under the street lamp, we'll conquer it all
In a room where whispers hush Soft beats make the chaos crush Gentle notes, the sax aside Bringing calm to mind and eye Fingers flicking keys so light Lamps a glow, a quiet night Books around but all can wait As melodies articulate Lost in rhythm, mind at ease Focus sharp, anxiety leaves Saxophone and beats so sweet Make the perfect study sheet Through the night, the sounds will weave Each note tells a tale to believe Pages turn, thoughts all align In this moment, everything's fine Feel the groove, a steady flow In its comfort, dreams will grow With each beat, let worries fade In this music, hearts are swayed Lost in rhythm, mind at ease Focus sharp, anxiety leaves Saxophone and beats so sweet Make the perfect study sheet
In the corner of the room where the sunlight streams A melody dances, fulfilling dreams Notes of the piano, also kind Painting peace in a cluttered mind The clock may tick, the world may spin But here in silence, let study begin With each gentle key, calm descends A symphony of focus where stress ends Books open wide, pages turn slow Here in silence, let study begin With each gentle key, calm descends A symphony of focus where stress ends Books open wide, pages turn slow In this tranquil space, knowledge grows Smooth piano plays, time stands still Mind at ease without a will Soft notes like whispers, secrets told In this haven, thoughts unfold Warmth of music, gentle embrace A perfect rhythm in this quiet place The clock may tick, the world may spin But here in silence, let study begin With each gentle key, calm descends A symphony of focus where stress ends The clock may tick, the world may spin But here in silence, let study begin With each gentle key, calm descends A symphony of focus where stress ends Books open wide, pages turn slow In this tranquil space, knowledge grows Smooth piano plays, time stands still Mind at ease without a will Soft notes like whispers, secrets told In this haven, thoughts unfold Warmth of music, gentle embrace A perfect rhythm in this quiet place Soft notes like whispers, secrets told In this haven, thoughts unfold Warmth of music, gentle embrace A perfect rhythm in this quiet place Words on paper, ideas in flight Under the glow of the mellow light Harmony weaves through pages dense Crafting a mood so pure and tense When the world outside feels so far Reach for the keys, they're never a jar In their touch, finds solace deep A lullaby for thoughts so sweet
The city lights are dim tonight Our saxophone croons in softer light Books open wide, pages turning slow In the stillness where dreams truly grow Coffee steam rising with the moonlight Record spins keeping troubles light Each note whispers a subtle charm In our quiet haven, there's no alarm Take it easy, let your worries fade In this moment, all your stress be swayed Golden rhythms in a mellow flow Let the jazz's gentle breezes blow Timeless tunes blend with study lore Creating ambience we can't ignore Every beat, a tranquil embrace In our minds, it leaves a trace Shadows dance on the windowpane Low fire beats in the calming rain Every line read like a fine white sip In the warmth of jazz, our hearts are great Take it easy, let your worries fade In this moment, all your stress be swayed Golden rhythms in a mellow flow Let the jazz's gentle breezes blow Take it easy, let your worries fade In this moment, all your stress be swayed Golden rhythms in a mellow flow Let the jazz's gentle breezes blow
In a room where shadows stand Books are open, lost in trance The clock ticks with a mellow beat A refuge in this quiet retreat Pages turn with whisper grace Soft notes float through the space Time feels like it's standing still Lost in rhythms, soak the thrill This timeless groove if it flows Through the stillness, it softly grows A melody that's pure delight Study sessions through the night The rain taps on the windowpane A gentle sound to ease the strain Chill beats in the candlelight Making study feel just right Pins glide over paper's face Each stroke carries a mindful pace In this cocoon, we find our peace Our worries and dark cares released Oh, this timeless groove if it flows Through the stillness, it softly grows A melody that's pure delight Study sessions through the night Oh, this timeless groove if it flows Through the stillness, it softly grows A melody that's pure delight Study sessions through the night The rain taps on the windowpane A gentle sound to ease the strain Chill beats in the candlelight Making study feel just right Pins glide over paper's face Each stroke carries a mindful pace In this cocoon, we find our peace Our worries and dark cares released Timeless groove if it flows Through the stillness, it softly grows A melody that's pure delight Study sessions through the night In a cozy corner, lost in silent dreams Gentle trumpet whispers, soothing it seems Beats are soft and steady Like a heart's serene rhyme Easing into study, telling tales through time Lo-fi loops of leisure, harmonies so sweet Galaxies of calmness in each tranquil beat Trumpet tones like moonlight on a velvet sky Floating through the stillness where the books lie Notes like candle flickers in the quiet room Shadows dance and mingle, dispelling the gloom Every trumpet sighing like a gentle breeze Carrying your thoughts away with subtle ease Trumpet tranquility in a world apart Soft and non-optrusive, yet it warms the heart Lo-fi rhythms cradle every fleeting thought Turning every moment into what you saw Love for this and flowing like a murmuring stream Trumpet paints a landscape of a breathless dream Gates that keep you focused yet so far away In that world of wonder where you wish to stay Cool winds of melody rustle through your mind Leaving all the worries drifting far behind Every note a whisper, telling tales anew In this seamless symphony just for you In a room where time steps by so slow, Notes and scribbles all in a row. A gentle breeze hums through the air, Melody whispers for those who care. Books and papers scattered all around, Their rhythms hushed without a sound. Through the night, as thoughts unfold, A serenade in tunes untold. Velvet vibes, they ease the mind, Smooth as silk, gentle and kind. Let the music softly play, Guiding you through each study day. Velvet vibes, they ease the mind, Smooth as silk, gentle and kind. Let the music softly play, Guiding you through each study day. Time to unwind, to clear your head, With restful tones fill words embedded. Close your eyes and take a sigh In streams of lo-fi, see dreams fly. Pens and pencils dance in tune Underneath a pastel moon. Every line a story makes, Songs to soothe the heart's small aches. Velvet vibes, they ease the mind, Smooth as silk, gentle and kind. Let the music softly play, Guiding you through each study day. Velvet vibes, they ease the mind, Smooth as silk, gentle and kind. Let the music softly play, Guiding you through each study day. When the books close and the night is young And lo-fi beats just softly hum, I find my solace in a tune Beneath the cool and quiet moon. Notes that drift as time stands still, The evening calm, the gentle chill. Blankets me in a jazz embrace, A peaceful, studious, winding pace. In the spaces between the notes, I find the dreams that hope promotes. With every mellow beat I find, A restful state, a calmer mind. The saxophone, it sings so sweet, A melody that can't be beat. Each chord a whisper, soft and clear, A tender whisper in my ear. As records spin and thoughts rewind, I leave the busy day behind. Wrapped in the soothing sound of jazz, The perfect cure for all the worries. In the spaces between the notes, I find the dreams that hope promotes. With every mellow beat I find, A restful state, a calmer mind.
In a quiet corner of the room, Melodies drift away the gloom. Books and notes spread out wide, With jazz we let the thoughts glide. Soft beats tap a gentle tune, Calm the mind like a sleepy moon. Fingers tapping, pencils writing, These grooves we find the light. Pages turn and minds engage, Words dance freely on the page. A saxophone hums a mellow breeze, With these sounds, the mind's at ease. Soft beats tap a gentle tune, Calm the mind like a sleepy moon. Fingers tapping, pencils writing, In these grooves we find the light. Coffee brews a steady steam, Clarity flows through every dream. A trumpet sigh, the bass lines cheer With this mix, the focus nears. Soft beats tap a gentle tune, Calm the mind like a sleepy moon. Fingers tapping, pencils writing, In these grooves we find the light. Coffee brews a steady steam, Clarity flows through every dream. A trumpet sigh, the bass lines cheer With this mix, the focus nears. Soft beats tap a gentle tune, Calm the mind like a sleepy moon. Fingers tapping, pencils writing, In these grooves we find the light. Soft beats tap a gentle tune, Calm the mind like a sleepy moon. Fingers tapping, pencils writing, In these grooves we find the light. Soft beats tap a gentle tune, Calm the mind like a sleepy moon. Fingers tapping, pencils writing, In these grooves we find the light. Soft beats tap a gentle tune, Calm the mind like a sleepy moon. Fingers tapping, pencils writing, In these grooves we find the light.